We’ll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, May 15, 2024, at 6:30 p.m. President Flores, members Brzezinski, Nelson, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon, Councilmember Schoff is absent.
Alrighty, I would like to take a moment of silence to give a moment to the families who have been experiencing tragedy the last few weeks in our city. We’ve had a lot of loss, so right after the moment of silence, we will be doing our pledge of allegiance, but we’re all stand firm.
I forgot to mention, in a moment of silence, one of our constituents that, actually, do you want to say something about Mel?
Mel.
Yeah, you do that, you’ve got more history there.
Mel Himes, the gentleman came in here about a month ago, I think. He was fighting for a handicap sign because he couldn’t get in and out of his car. Multiple problems anyway. Mel passed away. A tribute to our public work, so, once we made it understand what the situation was, they did put the sign out there. So Mel had a couple of weeks of being able to get in and out of his car in front of his house. If he pulled into the driveway, which technically, if you have a driveway, you can’t have that sign, but the houses are on both sides, so if he pulled in, he couldn’t get his walker or his wheelchair anyplace close. It was kind of crazy. The fight ended. Pat Harkins had a lot to do with helping too. And Mel, Mel was a great guy. He was at the school district for a bunch of years, way before your time, Ty, but he never said no to anybody. He was always there to help folks out. Let’s remember him.
Well, we will take the moment and respect all the people who are experiencing loss in our community, and then we’ll start the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the good soul, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to accept the minutes of the May 1, 2024, City Council meeting and bills for payment on May 17, 24, and 31, 2024, members Brzezinski, Nelson, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, and Flores.
Alrighty, everyone, tonight, we have students from the PA Youth in Government program who will be doing a presentation, a five-minute presentation. They receive their training, as you could say, through the Booker T. Washington Center. Youth in government study, students are what they’re labeled as, but these young people are definitely paving a way for more young people to be involved in this process and to be a voice legislatively. So I would like to hand the mic to Tyler, so that he can elaborate a little more.
So, Councilmember, or councillor, I’ll say councillor, Troop set up for us to go over to Booker T. a few weeks back, and we had the honor and privilege to learn about this program, and we were all blown away just by the work that you had done. And so often, we hear about the really negative things that are happening, right? But that’s also our role as city councillors, and I wanted to take a moment to really honor the immense amount of work that you all have done, and to really celebrate and lift up just this program, and to honor you all with a certificate from the city, because it really is quite exceptional. But I would invite a leader to come up and kind of explain the program, more from your perspective, because I’m just going to not do it the justice that it deserves. So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amidali Serrano. As you were informed, I do work for the Booker T. Washington Center. This is, I am the program director for the after-school programming and extended programming. We decided to bring this program to Booker T. and add it to the extended programming that runs from 6:00 p.m. till 9:00 p.m., in efforts to try to get middle school and high school students off of the streets and giving them something else to do. So we understand that in the Booker T., we run a couple of different programs for these kids at this age, but other than sports programs, there’s very limited programs that are actually available for those who don’t do any sports. So what I decided to do is to bring the program over. This is a program that is ran statewide, and it’s actually ran nationally, so every state has their own program, and they run it as a state. Once we get them all their training, they start in October, and they finish in April, and they go for four days, a four-day conference, and in these four days, they are moving, and they do approximately 60 to 65 hours in just these four days. They are moving, they are going, they are meeting a bunch of different people. So I took nine students this year, six bills were written, and actually, I would rather have them to speak, specifically my committee chair and my delegation leader, if that’s okay? Alright, so I would love to bring first my committee chair, which is DeVeja Thomas.
Hi, I’m DeVeja Thomas, and I’m a delegate from the Booker T. delegation, and I was a Blue House committee chair, and basically, I’m pretty sure you guys know what that is, but I was there, and you run for election, you get elected, and then you sit there and you run your whole meeting as if it was like an actual House of Representatives, and that was pretty cool, and then it went to the House floor. And we spoke a lot, we passed a lot of bills, we failed a lot of bills, it was pretty fun. But yeah, it’s a pretty serious program, it takes a lot of work, dedication, and time. I’ve been in it for four years, and I’ve loved it, and it like, I would never speak four years ago today, ask her, I’d be like in the back of the room, but now I’m like running for election and reelection, so yeah, it’s pretty fun.
Thank you for speaking to us.
Alright, so then, my delegation leader I want to bring up, her name is Gianna Stewart, and I would like to bring Tondi up as well, because they actually got their bills through committee, out of committee, in the Senate, out of the Senate, in the House, out of the House, and signed. So our next step is to get it in front of, hopefully, Mersky or Bizarro, and actually have them take this bill all the way to Harrisburg on their own.
Hi, I’m Gianna Stewart, I’m the delegation leader. I’ve been in the program for two years as a Gold Member, which means like entry level. My experience with the program has been so, like, it’s been such a learning experience, learning about all of like what you can do, what legislators every day do. It’s a tough four days, it’s a stressful four days, I got like five hours of sleep over the four days I was there, but I loved it so much, and it hurts my heart that this is my last year doing the program. I learned so much about how, what different problems like we face in PA, not just in my city, but in other places of PA, like learning different perspectives, and this year, we even got a bill passed with one of my...
If I send her, she can talk about her bill.
So I’d just like to start off by like speaking about my experience. This is actually my first year, and though it is my last sadly, I want to keep coming back and like making sure that this can continue on. It’s been like an amazing experience, not only getting to learn how the government works, but also getting to work with our peers to realize that we can actually make a change, and then make it at like the actual state level. So regarding our bill, mine is about cutting insulin copays down to $30. Prescription drug pricing is a huge problem in our country, and it affects many Americans, and unfortunately, Pennsylvania has not passed this bill yet, but other states have, so that’s why I wanted to introduce it here.
Thank you, it sounds great. Hopefully, Pat or Mersky will pick it up for you, ladies and gentlemen.
Just to finish off, I want to thank you so much for this opportunity to spread the word about our program. I think that once we get a better delegation, we can really get kids interested in this entire process, and hopefully get kids like me and the rest of the delegation thinking about this as a future career. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and speaking to us.
So finally, I would just like to say that a program like this is very, very needed, specifically in Erie, Pennsylvania. We have almost zero representation in Harrisburg, and these students are very, very aware that what happens in Harrisburg affects them here, and they understand those implications very, very well. I would love to be able to not only grow this particular delegation, but in a couple of years, perhaps take three, four, or five different delegations from Erie, Pennsylvania. Some of these schools are, these are schools that are actually doing this, and they’re actually doing this in school. It’s a shame that our students need to find me and find somewhere to go learn this. This isn’t just affecting your students, though. These students are going back home and explaining to their parents what they do in the Senate, what they do in the House, what a legal legislative bill is about, how to caucus, how to speak publicly, and they’re actually teaching their parents. So you’re not just educating your future voters, you’re actually educating your current voters. And in a city like Pennsylvania, where our voting rates are very, very low, we need to teach. Thank you for my time.
Thank you for coming.
So I’m going to break a little bit of protocol and come down and hand you the certificates, gentlemen. I wanted to say it because I know you won’t actually press anything.
Don’t hurt yourself.
So here’s to everybody, but I did this, if it’s okay, just thank you all. And I can’t wait to see both of you, I’m sure this is our last thing.
If all of the students would like to come up, we can have them shake every council member’s hand, Tyler. Sorry to make you suffer, but you were already on the move.
It’s good, it’s good for my... Now, see, maybe that’s why I can’t, I have to table them. You guys didn’t skip me, it’s okay, it’s okay. You guys are awesome.
Keep up the good work, everyone.
We are very proud of you all, and we hope that your program gets the acknowledgement you all deserve, so that we can grow and be a force in Harrisburg, because I know that it’s a very lonely road when there’s only a handful of you all, but all you need to do is get the word out, and I’m thinking this might actually help. So I look forward to what you all will be doing in the coming months, and next year, when you’re in Harrisburg again, those who will be going. So we will be moving on from the presentation portion, and we are going to move on to find out if anybody has a repository sale. Do we have any repository sales? Do we have any repository sales? I hear none. So we will move on to citizens to be heard. The media will line up on the left side of your room, our right, and anybody who would like to speak, please line up on the right side of the room for you, our left. And you get five more minutes to speak, and of those five minutes, please state your name and the municipality in which you live. If you would sign, we could follow up with you in the future if there’s something that sparks an interest of council members to follow up with, so that is an option for you as well. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Teresa Fullerton, this is my daughter Jessica, and I’d like to talk for a few minutes about code enforcement. I own properties in the city of Erie, and I’m having a lot of problems with getting communication with them. There are stories on the news about the city having money to maintain properties and grants to fix them, and I don’t qualify for any of those. It seems like these agencies and departments are blighting and tearing down properties for their own gain, green spaces, and these are income, this is my income. The goal is to have money to help so that tenants who would otherwise go into a shelter can have affordable housing. I have affordable housing, but the city won’t, they’re blighting my properties and won’t let me rent them. When tenants don’t pay rent, they call code enforcement after they have destroyed our properties. Code enforcement comes in, puts orange stickers on our buildings, and shuts them down. Right now, I’m $4,000 down a month with all the properties code has shut down. I am in bankruptcy because of tenants, which includes my own residence. I cannot make my bankruptcy payments, I cannot pay water, sewer, garbage, or taxes with these properties being shut down. The repairs that the city wants, they cost thousands of dollars, it’s hard to get maintenance people, you can’t get somebody to work for you when you don’t have money coming in to pay them. My daughter helps me, she does a lot of the work in my properties for me while I’m at work. A lot of the repairs are not necessary, and they are not safety issues. The properties are my income. Code enforcement has told me that they are here to help me, to get these properties up and running in a safe manner, which is my goal. It isn’t true at all. There is total disconnect between what they say and what they do. They do not return my phone calls, they do not communicate with me. I have a property, for example, that has been shut down by code enforcement for 18 months. I completed the list that they gave me to repair the property, and when I called Bud Palladus, who’s the code enforcement officer, to inspect it so that I could get it re-rented after I completed the list, he told me, “This is out of our hands, and you have to call the redevelopment authority,” which I found out the redevelopment authority and the city code enforcement are not connected, they are not, they’re two different agencies. I called redevelopment authority, who I have been working and communicating with on my blighted properties. I asked the redevelopment authority what I had to do to get my properties rented. They said, “They,” being Jake, I’ve been speaking with Jake, and I’ve also had conversations in the past with Aaron Snippert. They told me I needed to get an inspection from BIU, that’s who does the Erie City rentals. I contacted BIU, I spoke with Aaron, who is one of the inspectors. I passed the inspection and was told by Aaron at BIU that I could rent the property. Within a week of passing the inspection, code enforcement shut it down again. Now, they told me that’s two different entities, but now code enforcement’s involved again. They’re shutting properties down, they’re making a list of my properties and shutting them down, and they’re doing this to other people, too. Now, code enforcement shut it down again, and they told me I needed to bring all the plumbing up to code at the tune of $4,500, which I don’t have, and I’ve never had a problem with any of the rental inspections before. Now, all of a sudden, they want this, and this, and this, before I can rent them, but I completed their list already, and now there’s more. BIU is, I talked to, I talked to Andy Zimmerman, I had a meeting with Andy Zimmerman and Mike Lavery, and they both told me, Andy Zimmerman told me that that paper from BIU, that I got the inspection and passed, wasn’t worth a lick of spit once it hits a curb. And I said, “Well, I’d like to know what I’m paying for, then.” I pay $600 a year, today, I just paid the city $560 for rental inspections that Andy Zimmerman told me aren’t worth anything. And that’s what I did, the redevelopment authority told me to do that, and that’s what I did, and code said, city code said no. So when I asked Andy Zimmerman, “Why do I pay $600 a year if it isn’t worth a lick of spit once it hits the curb?” Those are his exact words, he said he had no response, nothing. Code enforcement is harassing me, and the latest fiasco was, I’m in bankruptcy, I missed a payment on one of my rental inspection years in 2018 because I didn’t, I didn’t get an invoice. If I don’t get an invoice, I don’t know it’s due. So that was included in my bankruptcy, and they know that, and I’m still inactive bankruptcy. So they took me, I had to rearrange my whole work schedule, they took me to court on all my buildings, there was three different district justices involved. I had to pay $250 to have my lawyer write a letter saying that I’m inactive bankruptcy, so they will get their money, because it’s in bankruptcy when bankruptcy decides to pay it. I’m still inactive bankruptcy. And then they dismissed all the cases after I had already rearranged my work schedule. I need these properties up and running. We, we do the repairs, I have somebody that helps me, too, but you can’t pay people when you don’t have money coming in. I do the repairs to keep the property safe and rentable, and the city wants more and more. It’s affecting my health and my well-being as well. All I’m asking is to be able to rent affordable, safe apartments if everything isn’t up to snuff according to code, to be able to rent them out and fix them as I go along.
That’s your five minutes, ma’am.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Jason, can you please get her name and number so that we can look into this? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard tonight? Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard tonight? For the good of the order, do we have any citizens who would like to be heard tonight? I hear none, so we will be moving on. Lori, go ahead.
Ordinances for final passage. Council file number 16433, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $25,119.27 of program income generated through the Community Development Block Grant for CDBG CD22 projects. This would be final ordinance 21/2024. Sponsored by Councilmember Troop, seconded by Councilmember Nelson, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16433, and now known as official file ordinance 21/2024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, and Flores.
Madam President, just for a second, let the kids know that when we’re silent, that means yes, and the only time we vote in a negative is we say no. Because they’re just looking, so, nobody’s saying anything.
So, yeah, we do sit up here in silence, we don’t interact with citizens who are going to be heard, and unless you are not in favor of something that we’re discussing, everyone is to assume that it’s a yes vote, unless a council member states no for the record. That is our process. We used to use this back in the day, but since I’ve been involved in city politics over the last five years, I’ve never seen that board actually lit up, so I think it’s just there for show.
You didn’t have the bus up there.
I know, it’s gone. I think it might be here. Oh, okay, yeah, it’s tucked away out of sight, out of mind, but definitely, so we’re not just up here in silence, we’re letting Lori read everything for the record.
We could try it.
Every time we try, something goes wrong.
Okay, City Council pass official file ordinance 21/2024 by yea six, nay zero. Council file number 16434, official ordinance 22/2024, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $983,681 from unappropriated fund balance in the Liquid Fuels Fund for expenditure thereof. Funds will be used for the streets paving. Sponsored by Councilmember Nelson, seconded by Councilmember Troop, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16434, and now known as official file ordinance 22/2024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council pass official file ordinance 22/2024 by yea six, nay zero. Council file number 16435, official ordinance 23/2024, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $3,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof from Laurel L. Highlands Nestor and Wade E. Nestor for the purchase of a golf cart. Sponsored by Councilmembers Brzezinski, seconded by Councilmember Troop, or Witherspoon, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16435, and now known as official file ordinance 23/2024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council pass official file ordinance 23/2024 by yea six, nay zero. Council file number 16436, official ordinance 24/2024, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $175,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from Pennsylvania State Recycling Grant Act 101 and providing for the expenditure thereof. Sponsored by Councilmember Troop, seconded by Councilmember Titus, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16436, and now known as official file ordinance 24/2024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, and Flores. City Council pass official file ordinance 24/2024 by yea six, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading, Council File Number 16437, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $181,599 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof. This is the 2024 Insurance Fraud Prevention Authority. Sponsored by Councilmember Witherspoon, seconded by Councilmember Brzezinski, the Council File Ordinance Number 16437, haven’t been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, and Flores. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16437 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council File Number 16438, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $51,340 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. The contribution is from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to be used for stormwater improvements at Garrison Run. Sponsored by Councilmember Troop, seconded by Councilmember Titus, that Council File Ordinance Number 16438, haven’t been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, and Flores. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16438 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council File Number 16439, an ordinance amending Article 147, Section 1470111, to amend the definition of surviving spouse, Article 14701U, and to add the definition of killed in line of duty and Section 14706B to define qualifying causes of death and disqualifying circumstances for killed in the line of duty benefits. Sponsored by Councilmember Witherspoon, seconded by Councilmember Brzezinski, the Council File Ordinance Number 16439, haven’t been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16439 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council File Number 16440, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $250,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Funding is from a grant from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Economic and Community Development for purchase of a fire truck. Sponsored by Councilmember Witherspoon, seconded by Councilmember Brzezinski, the Council File Ordinance 16440, haven’t been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16440 by yea six, nay zero on first Council President, this takes us to new business.
Can I have a council motion and second to move the balance of the agenda?
Mr. Bill, Madam President.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have any separations?
Number seven.
Anyone else on council have anything to separate? I hear none.
Moving the balance of the agenda, members Brzezinski, Nelson, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, and Flores.
Discussion?
Maybe explain to the kids why we’re doing this.
Okay, so right now, if there’s issues on the agenda that council wants to have a discussion about, or that we don’t agree with, we will separate it, and then everything else on the agenda, which I don’t see any agendas in front of anyone, they’re on the back, you can follow along so you know where we are in our process, we will discuss it, or table it, or just open up conversation, so that everyone on council can feel validated and heard. And the separation right now is in regards to us passing a resolution with no amounts. Council is the purse, we control the funds of the city, and it concerns us that there are no dollar amounts on the funding that we’re supposed to be getting allocated from HUD, from the state and federal levels. Correct? Did I say that wrong?
Yeah, you can give them a little credit, it’s not a concern, we, we’re way behind schedule on this because Congress hasn’t, because HUD hasn’t given the numbers yet, so we’re starting to get a little nervous, and we’re trying to do this in the most timely manner possible.
Correct, and they feel as though us passing this resolution would just be like a letter of support from council saying that we’re ready to move forward on the June 1 start date, but it concerns council to not have the amounts when we know community centers are in desperate need for these fundings. Did I miss anything?
Pretty good.
Oh, July 1 start date, okay. My apologies.
I’d like to move to table this, and the reason for it is so that we don’t want to hold a vote up for two weeks. If HUD should come up with the money figure, we can get a call from our people, and... If HUD should come up with the money figure, we can get a call from our people and have an emergency meeting called by the President, and we can pass this and move right on. If we voted down, it would be a wait till June for our next meeting before we could do anything. And we felt uncomfortable passing something with no, no money in it. It's nothing fishy. You kids have been working with Harrisburg, so you totally understand what we're looking at. Okay? And that's why we wanted to make you involved in this. With that being said, unless somebody else wants to say something, table?
I need a second.
Second.
All right. Motion to table by Councilmember Brazinski, seconded by Councilmember Nelson to table resolution number seven under new business. Members Brazinski, Nelson, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. Motion to table passes, six to nothing. Madam President, this takes us to committee reports.
All righty, committee reports. We will start with Councilmember Witherspoon and work our way around.
Thank you very much, Madam President. No report.
Next.
Okay, thank you. So very, I'll try to go through mine quickly here. The Parking Authority met yesterday, so on 5/14. There are a lot of projects and things in motion that they're, they're going through. The city just got the signs installed along State Street. They have the information about the app, the QR code, so that you can pay to park. There's a lot of discussion, I know there's a lot of frustration that's going on around the app. They do have a survey that's up right now, and they're getting some feedback, and they're addressing a lot of the things that they've received in those, those comments and the feedback. They also are, if, if there's anybody who's struggling on how to use it right now, they have a video up on their website, so you can go to Erie Parking Authority's website and it'll kind of walk you through how to use it. We're not looking to move or, not in the direction, I guess the Parking Authority's not looking to move in the direction of adding in more kiosks at this time or really the option of not paying any other way than, than mobile opportunities.
Do you know if the city has added that video to our city website?
I'm actually, I'm not sure if we've added it to our web, the city website.
We need to figure out, because if not, then we need to.
Yeah. They have some positions open, so they are looking to hire. They are also getting ready to go through their inspection. And once that inspection is done and they have the reports, we'll be reaching out, like the Parking Authority will be reaching out to all of council to kind of bring us in to kind of go over everything. And so look for that invite, hopefully within, within the next month, so that we can kind of get a better, as, as a full group, what is going on. EMTA had their meeting on, their next meeting is on May 20th, sorry, so it's next week at 4:00 PM. You can join virtually. You have to sign up via email to get that, that link though. So it's T-Croll, so T-C-R-O-L-L at ride-the-e.com. And they just had their rider appreciation days where they had the free fair day on 5/8. They have a lot of positions that are open right now as well, so if you want to head over there, they were over at a job fair today, trying to get some of those filled. The Erie Zoo also has a lot of great projects happening. You know, we, I talked about the meeting that we had the last time, but they've now got their auto exhibit that's, that's moving. They've got a new boardwalk that's in place. And the city planning department, I just want to again give, give accolades for the help that they've been doing to remove a lot of the dead and dying trees. They were, they're creating a safety hazard, not just for the golf course, but also for the zoo, and also getting in the way of them getting recertified. The city's also working with the zoo and a few of the other big projects that would bring some more resources to the community, so I'm excited about seeing how that kind of works out. And then tomorrow, I will be attending the Planning Commission training session, and John Mcgrinner from Pennsylvania DCED will be there to, to lead, so I'll report back out on that at our next session.
Thanks, and thank you for the report. Councilmember Troop?
Madam President, thank you. Like to thank Ms. Serrano and her program and all the students. It was, it's great to see you here today. It's a great program. Frederick Douglass said in the 1800s, "Build strong children," and they'll grow up to be great adults. So it still applies today. So, so what you're doing is great. So we discovered the great program, we came about the great program because we contacted, city council was interested in contacting and getting involved with youth in the city. So glad we were able to do that. We will be back. And actually, this Monday, we're going to be going out to the JFK Center and talking to some youth out there. They have like a drug and alcohol program. We're going to be talking to them, meeting some youth. And if there's any other organizations out there that want, would like city council to come out and be active with your youth, read to them, talk to them, you can get a hold of us, get ahold of me. My email address is mtrup@eary.p-a.us. Also, we know summer's coming, and so we want you to check the city website and the downtown partnership website for all the great activities that we go on this summer. Activities that help to get our community together, movie nights in Perry Square, concerts at Perry Square, all different types of activities going on. So make sure you check that out. Also, you guys know I work in school, so I'm encouraging, I work in high school and at Erie High School, and I'm encouraging parents to make sure you're checking up on your students' grades because we don't want them to get behind. We know at the high school level, they have to pass the classes. If they're not on track, summer school applications are out right now, so please check on that so you can keep your student on track to graduate from high school. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Troop. Councilmember Nelson?
Yes. I, through emails, the Planning Commission is moving forward in some zoning resolutions that they moved forward in November and that city council voted on earlier this year are getting circulated in draft form, so that's pretty exciting. I think they're in review in the solicitor's office now. Trades Licensing Board, I went to that meeting. They didn't have a quorum, but they did hear from the public. There were some local plumbers that had some concerns about how certain fees were being implemented. I filled in on the parking review board, and that was the, a very easy one this month, a lot less nuanced than the previous month. And then the Water Reserve Fund, we had a meeting for that this past week. Actually, the previous Friday, I'd had breakfast with, with our former mayor that started that fund, so she gave me like an oral history of the whole thing. But a couple of things to note, at the end of 2022, that fund was at $12.6 million. It's up to about $15 million now, probably over $15 million today, maybe under yesterday. That extra $2.5 million that has grown over the years, we've historically taken a 4% withdraw from that fund, but as it's grown over the last only year and a half now, that's an extra $100,000 for capital repairs every year in perpetuity as that fund grows. So, so pretty exciting stuff there. The analysts that work on that, in the, in the committee that reviews that fund, there was some stuff last quarter that was suggested about where we were with our allocations between fixed income and growth, large cap and mid-cap, and they sent it back to their analysts to examine. So we're gonna, we have a recommendation that we'll be bringing counsel, I believe next meeting, for reallocation of that fund that on all the 10, 20, and 70-year projections came out significantly better. So, so we'll have those here for you soon. They just haven't, we've got to finish out a quarter. That's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Brazinski?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of things. Wonderful situation on 11th and Holland. Was that Monday, Mayor? Yeah, it was Monday, right? Yeah, Sister Mary Miller with, Mr. Nelson was with us, and so was Kathy. We designated that corner for, she's a lady that basically ran the Ma's Kitchen for 1,000 years and two days, I think, before she died. A wonderful lady to love on that corner. I expected maybe, you know, 10, 15 people, probably close to 100. It was a beautiful, beautiful thing. And Sister Miller made sure that the good Lord gave us a beautiful, warm day. The sun was shining. It couldn't have been a more perfect tribute for her. On another note, a sadder note, but a beautiful note too, was I was out here in Perry Square. You know, we take our freedom with a grain of salt sometimes. We don't, we don't think about it as other people paying a price for us. Today, we honored our fall, our fallen patrolmen, policemen, state policemen who have died and have given their life for us. Anytime you hear the bagpipes, you can feel a shiver go down, down your spine. And again, that shiver and then the north, northeast wind coming off the lake. It was cold, but I'll tell you what, one too many dry eyes over there. Lot of beautiful people. We had the state police, we had municipalities with us also, and it was, even if the fire trucks were there. Chief, I see Mr. Trot back there, thank you for that. It was a wonderful time. Wrapping up quickly, our Sea Wolves had a chance to win, but it turned into a water polo match because it started raining so hard in Harrisburg, they had to close the stadium. So they, they ended the game in eight innings, and they, they, they lost yesterday, but they've been playing super. And this is the bad part, because when they play real well, then they start taking our guys and moving them up. So we lost one of our best pitchers. Lockhart went up to Toledo. I'm a diehard Tiger fan, so I always bring that up. Port Authority, if you saw in the paper, we looked at transfers and things like that. We have filed all the paperwork to take over the coke plant and begin a long-time cleanup. But something had to happen there. You know, the coke plant closed, they left, and it just left everything there by Port Authority and the county. Ms. Mangene, working together on this, and it's going to take years and years to clean up. And once it's clean, you kids sitting right there will have your advantage. I'll be pushing up grass probably by time. That place is nice enough to, to live there. But I was brought up there. I was brought up in Fort Wallace, and I knew that area very, very well. I'm surprised I don't have three ears and two noses with all the...
Toxic.
Oh, man. But anyway, that being said, Sea Wolves, super job, I said that, and the rest of my time, I will be forgetting for next time. Thank you very much, and thanks, thank you for being you, kids. Makes me feel good knowing we have a future.
All right, so the way that the committee reports go, everyone on council will deliver their committee report, and then the president will deliver hers in this case, because, you know. So for me, the department head meetings that the mayor holds on Tuesdays are really useful. I get insight on what's going to be coming to the agenda meeting that following Wednesday, so I know roughly what to expect and what's going to be set to the agenda to then have at our city council meeting. I have my meeting with the clerks and the solicitors to go over everything that will be on the agenda that, that Wednesday. And things have been moving great to have our agendas posted on Friday before 3:00, which is always great because council members are working a whole other job outside of this job. So when we get the email at our convenience that Friday, we'll be able to take the whole weekend and go over anything, any questions we have. We have Monday and Tuesday to get answers if we have the time to do so. So I also attended the Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network's annual gala. I think it's like Guess That Tune. It was my first time attending. It was over 500 people, and it was really inspiring to see so many happy, joyful people dressed up in 70s and 60s theme, bell bottoms, and just denim. It was a great experience because everybody was just in a great mood, and that didn't involve too much social drinking beforehand, which I always enjoy. I also want to give acknowledgement to our Erie High graduates who will be graduating on June 1. As Councilmember Mo Troop has mentioned, he is a principal, so we will be pretty busy June 1 with the graduation. I was asked to speak that day to the students, so I look forward to that. I also wanted to reiterate on taking a moment to, you know, give acknowledgement to the families who are experiencing tragedy and loss over the last few weeks. For the start of the summer, I'm very aware that it gets dangerous with the speeds that we drive and the events that we like to participate in. So I just want to, you know, state for the record, please, let's just do our part to make sure that we are keeping our children and families safe and acknowledging that the speed limit in the city is 25. Please watch kids playing in their neighborhood because they should enjoy their summer as well. I also wanted to talk about the fact that for the rest of May, it is Mental Health Awareness Month. We want to make sure that we are giving ourselves the space and the acknowledgement for the issues that we are having and the traumas that we are experiencing, but also seeking help if need be. Life is hard, and it's okay to get help. You need to understand that, and I am happy that there are young people here that we're speaking to acknowledging that, you know, most families don't talk about their feelings, but it is okay to do so. And then I also wanted to thank Ms. Serrano and her students for the great work that you're doing. I'm happy that council was able to give you a platform to be acknowledged and recognized because the acknowledgement and recognition is needed to keep you motivated. And I hope that in a few years, we will be seeing some of you all running for office in our area, if not higher office, because 10 years is a lot of time to work hard, but hard work pays off. And that is all I have to say for my committee report, and I will yield the time to the solicitors if they have a report.
Other than, I'll follow up with the lady from Public Cal, and I'll call them tomorrow and see what's going on. Her situation sounded pretty complicated.
Yeah. I appreciate that, Jason.
Otherwise, no report from the solicitor.
Thank you. Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes, I was going to mention five things real quick over the last couple of weeks here. One took place today, is the Annual Fraternal Order of Police Memorial Service took place right out here in Perry Square. It was very, very moving. I don't know if any of you happened to be there at it, but they talked about the 14 police officers that were killed, Erie police officers that were killed in the line of duty, and it was a very, very moving event. They do that every year at this time. Then back on Monday, the 13th, Ed already mentioned the 3:00 event that we had, kind of naming the city after Sister Mary Miller. And we also had a dinner at 5:00, which was over at the Polish Falcons. There were a lot of people there. And again, we were honoring the memory of Sister Mary Miller, and they did a pretty moving presentation about her and what she did, and she was interviewed a lot in it as well. It was, it was very, very well done. Then back on Saturday, May 11th, the Sisters of St. Joseph had a gala night that I attended, and that was mentioned also by the president of council. And it was, it was a very good event, very moving. Back on Thursday, the 9th, Doris Kearns Goodwin was here in Erie, and she's an author, and she's a very, a very good speaker as well to listen to. I did a proclamation for her, welcoming her to Erie, which we had a breakfast meeting with her. And then they had from 11:00 to 2:00 at the Warner Theater was her event, and there was a lunch with that as well. And she had just written a new book called The Unfinished Love Story, A Personal History of the 1960s, which was, that's kind of when I was your age growing up, and it was a very, also a very moving, moving event. Back on Thursday, May 7th, Darrell Craig, who's also known as Brother D, he restarted the SPCP Council, which was a, a group that we formed that was doing a lot of good things. That, that stands for Secure Police Community Partnership, and that was from 5:00 to 6:30 that evening. That was, that was a very moving event as well. I'm glad that's getting going again. In September, excuse me, on Saturday, May the 4th, City of Erie had a tire and electronics recycling event. I don't know if any of you participated in that. That was from 9:00 to 1:00, and it was amazing. I went over early in the morning, I was going to get in line, but the line was like over an hour long of cars to get in and do that. So then I went back around noon, and it was a little shorter, but not much. But I was kind of lucky because, you know, I was, I had four tires that have been, we've had in our basement for probably 10 years, and I don't think we even own the car that they were used for anymore. But they were also, so they were recycling that, but also electronics items, and they ran out of room for electronics, so they were coming down. I saw this guy coming down, stopped at every car, and some of the cars got out and went, went up to the front. And so he got to me, he said, "What do you have?" And I said, "Tires." He said, "Okay, you can go up to the front and get rid of them because these others can't get through yet." So I got through in about a half an hour total, and it, it was really a great event. It was very busy, a lot of good things. It was very busy, a lot of good things. And helped a lot of people here in the City of Erie. So that concludes my report. Thanks.
I'm thinking maybe we need to do it again. Because it's always a long line from what people tell me. And the wait is extremely long. And then the fact that everybody wants to get rid of stuff is encouraging because then they don't leave it in the neighborhood. So it might be something to save us some headache later.
Yeah.
But this concludes the city council meeting. And that's it, under an hour.